Okay, I'd like to call the February 15, 2022, meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board to order. In attendance this evening are myself, Russell Denver, member Cassandra Cher Suolo, member John Torsia, member Pete Punderson, and member George Kingston. So I'm required by Master General Law to ask if there is anyone who might be recording this meeting, and if so, would you please raise your hand so you can be recognized and be brought into the meeting and let us know what format you're using to record this meeting? Hearing none, I'll bring it back and ask that the first item of business would be the acceptance of the February 1st, 2022, meeting minutes. Hopefully, people have had an opportunity to review them. Any corrections, edits, suggestions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the February 1st, 2022, meeting minutes?
Don't move.
I'll second that.
We have motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. This Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. First item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, item number one under site plan review waivers, case SPRW 2022-1, request for a site plan review waiver for a home office at 132 Parker Street, Assessors Parcel ID 77-5-44 in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant Leonard Scarnici, 132 Parker Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
So I see a phone.
Yep.
It appears you're muted.
Somebody's gonna have to remind me how to unmute on a phone. It's star. Gosh. All right.
And for the petitioner and anyone, you know, coming forward, we really should be able to see your face so that we know it's you, it's you who is actually speaking to the board and not someone who might be representing you or someone who has absolutely nothing to do with this petition, as far-fetched as that might be, but it is imperative upon you as a petitioner to be able to figure the whole Zoom thing out so that we can see you and actually have a face-to-face discussion as we move forward. So I leave that out there for any future petitioner.
So the, to unmute, Len, it's star nine on your phone. No, well, let's see. That raised his hand. Star six, star six. My apologies. My, that was my error. There we go. Sorry about that.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello? Can you please state, can you please state your name and your address, please?
I'm Leonard Scarnici at 132 Parker Street, East Long Meadow.
Okay, and you're petitioning for a site plan waiver from the planning board for what type of business?
I, I am a plumber and I need somewhere to write my bills.
Okay, do you store a commercial vehicle there for, for your business?
No, I do not.
Do you, do you have any supplies that you store at your location, at that location?
No, I do not.
Okay. Other questions on the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the site plan waiver?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, so by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Number two, case SPRW 2022-2, request for a site plan review waiver for a home office at 8 Redden Drive, Assessors Parcel ID 32-23-22 in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant Jennifer Mira, 8 Redden Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Well, we see a picture and it looks like you're also muted.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm well. So we'd like to know a little bit about you, a little bit about the business, what you're going to have at that location for operation of the business.
Sure, my name is Jennifer Mara. I own a pet sitting and dog walking business and all of my business is conducted at the customers' homes. So basically, I would just use my home office for answering the phone and writing bills and whatnot.
Questions on the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So this matter, this item passes. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Yep, take care. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
All right, good morning to public hearings. Number one, case SP 2022-1, request for special permit for the Sweet Boutique, a bakery at 33 Harkness Ave, GIS 31 Harkness Ave, Assessors Parcel ID 12-33-0 in an existing structure located in the Business Zoning District. Applicant Nicole Moran, 42 Buick Street, Springfield, MA.
Nicole, yep.
So I see a, I see a very nice family photo.
I don't know, coming up.
Okay, and I see Carl, who, there's no picture and he's muted.
It's not, the video's not working.
Do, okay. So you're muted. Bottom left, it looks like a microphone.
Why does it, okay, it keeps muting on its own and it won't start the video.
Oh, Nicole, you're not muted, Mr. Proud. Carl, lower left, click on your microphone. Put your mouse down on the bottom of the screen. Bye, Carl.
So Carl, at the very, take your, take your cursor, go to the bottom left of the screen, it says mute. Hit it and it should pop up. Okay. So Nicole, you're the petitioner, so let's start, let's start with you.
I'm sorry, I don't know why my video will not work.
So, so let's start. So tell us about your business. Tell us about you, what your background, your history is for running a business, what your anticipated hours of operation are going to be. You know, storing of vehicles there, hours of operation, so just to get the discussion started. And then after that, the board members, if they have any questions, will ask questions of you and then we will open it up to the, for the public hearing on the special permit. So
Okay.
Kick it off to you.
Sure, so we're just gonna be a small boutique bakery. We specialize in decorated sugar cookies, French macarons, and other gourmet cookies, and we'll have a small selection of coffee. I currently have a home-based bakery and we have a dedicated customer base in there. We have a pretty good customer base. We'll probably be open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 4:00. Nothing is changing building-wise. The parking is all set. Nothing's changing, so.
Okay, all right. All right, I take it you've been in this business for a while?
Yes, so I've been doing this from home for about six to seven years.
Okay, all right.
So I have an established customer base and they're pretty dedicated.
Okay, and can you just, I, we know the plaza that it's in, but can you focus on which specific location, and I asked this, knowing what it is, but the public might be watching and don't have all the documents we do.
We will be where the beer shop was. They had one big space, but they're separating it into two, so it'll be Peppa's and then an open space, and then we'll be right next to that.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, questions on the board before we open for a public hearing? Okay, hearing no questions on the board. This is a public hearing and if there's any, I'm gonna open it, and if there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this special permit request, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting and be heard? I will ask again if there's anyone who would like to be heard on this matter, would you please raise your hand and you can be brought into the meeting so you can be heard? And here, hearing and seeing none, I would have a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Don't move.
I'll second that, George.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So back to the main item, a special permit to operate the bakery at the, at the location in question. Anybody have questions from the petitioner? Anyone have any suggested conditions? Okay, this is gonna be an easy one. Do I hear a motion to approve the special permit request?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion made and seconded. The only discussion obviously would be, we know you need to reach out to the Board of Health and get all of those requirements out of the way, you know.
That's all in progress.
Okay, great, good.
Yep.
And I want to thank you for choosing East Long Meadow, so that's great.
I grew up in East Long Meadow.
Great. So on, on the motion to approve the special permit, by roll call, Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Yum, aye.
Yum. Mr. Punderson.
I'm with George, yum, aye.
I'm not gonna be that corny, I'm just gonna say yes. So that, that item passes. Best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Next item, Mr. Torsia.
Yeah, item number two, request by applicant for a time extension for the approval of case FD-D 2019-1, Jeffrey Lane South, a two-lot subdivision on a 3.44 plus or minus acre parcel at 216 Summers Road, Assessors Parcel ID 40-25-31, located in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders Incorporated, 80 River Road, Southside Lane, MA.
So I would ask, if I could ask Nina, just to give a quick background on this, are you okay doing that, Nina?
Um, I know a little bit, but I was not present for the original subdivision approval.
But apparently the subdivision work had not begin with it, had not, had not begun within a two-year timeframe.
Correct, no work's been done. I believe Tom Christiansen confirmed that some of the land had been cleared, but no construction has started yet.
Okay. So the petitioner, again, Mr. Torsia, please.
Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders Incorporated.
And is there anyone here from?
He's here, Russ, but I've tried three times. It's just on my end. Here he is. Or she.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. We can't see you.
Yeah, sorry, I'm driving right now. It's not okay. I'll start the video right now. Hi, my name is Val Schrems, owner of Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders. We, I had this project for two years. It's still, you know, in the first stages and I'd like to get an extension for it. But that's possible, of course.
So why don't you just kind of give everybody, because there are some new members since you first came to, for this approval, so give us a focused, the property location, how many homes you're gonna be developing. This is more for the people who might be watching on Zoom, and what your anticipated timeframe for completion of the subdivision work.
It's not a subdivision, it's just one buildable lot, but you know, it has the, it's funny situation, it has a 60-foot frontage and, you know, the previous plan and board director, you know, she wanted us to make a subdivision approval for just one buildable lot, which, you know, we abide by it. We just had an approval from Wetland Conservation. We had an extension for that as well. So this is just one building lot.
Okay.
For one single family home.
Okay, questions on the board?
Now, where exactly, where exactly is this on Summers Road? If you come up the hill, where are you?
It's off St. Joseph, and it's right across from that little three lots of division that was built this year or last year, I believe.
Yeah, thank you. I know where it is, thanks.
Mr. Kingston?
What is your anticipated timeframe for, for getting this done?
Again, you know, we try to, I am working right now in Southwick and I don't have much time to go towards the East Long Meadow side. We're doing a big development there, so as soon as that project's done, so probably a year and a half, we'll start this one.
Okay, so how long of extension would you like?
What is the maximum we can get?
I can't imagine more than two years.
Okay, I'll go for that.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry about that.
All right. Do I have a motion from the board to approve this with a two-year extension?
Is that a fact that we can approve it for extension to two years?
Well, the, it's my belief that the original requirement is that there had to be work started within two years of the approval. Am I correct on that, George?
Actually, what we're looking at here is the security of the, from the subdivision, which is only, was originally only for two years. And so the question is, is the surety that's being offered, being continued for the two-year period? Do we have documentation on that or do we have some assurance that that's gonna happen?
Um, yes, I am planning to do. We have cleared it and probably we'll start it off next year for sure.
Well, you need to answer Mr. Kingston's question about the surety bond. Has it been extended, can it be extended for a period of time?
Yes, yes.
And, and do we have documentation saying that?
Um, I can forward it to you tomorrow.
Okay, all right. So we could potentially approve this conditioned upon receiving the evidence that the surety has been extended?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So I will take that as a motion, George?
Yeah, I would, one second. Is that a performance bond you want or a surety bond? Because those are two different things.
What do we have now?
Performance bond, but the work has not been started, so I can get your surety bond.
Either one would be acceptable, assuming that this is preferable enough.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to open it up to the public?
Yes, is it a public hearing, John?
Yeah, it's under the public hearing section.
Okay, all right. Then before we vote, we will open it to the public. If any, is anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, please raise your hand. You can be brought into the meeting. I will ask again, if there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter, would you please raise your hand and you can be brought into the meeting to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the motion to close the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well, and I'll go back to you, George. You, can you?
Motion to grant the extension contingent on our reception of an acceptable surety for the project.
For a period of, hold on, George.
For a period of two years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsia.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, we look forward, the planning department looks forward to getting that information as soon as possible.
Thank you. I'll contact the insurance company tomorrow and as soon as they'll get me one, I'll forward it to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you for keeping me honest, Mr. Torsia. Next, next item, please.
Yeah, request by applicant to withdraw their application without prejudice or for the board to issue a written decision without prejudice for case SP 2021-10, request for special permit for the installation of a wireless communications monopole and related equipment at 16 Meadowbrook Road, Assessors Parcel ID 78-1-0 on a 12 plus or minus acre site in the Residence A Zoning District. Applicant Selco Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless 20, Alexander Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut.
Okay, I will, I will try to give some history on this, so and the history will just be essentially from our last meeting. So at our last meeting, there was a vote to approve the, the petition that failed on a two in favor, three against vote. Subsequently, Verizon reached out and sought to, and please correct me if I'm wrong, representatives from Verizon, that either the board vote to allow Verizon's application to be withdrawn without prejudice or to deny the application without prejudice, because we have not yet filed a decision with the town clerk. We subsequently received a, an opinion from Town Council, Jesse Belcher-Tims, who indicated that either would be okay. Both could be, he felt comfortable with the planning board doing either one if they chose to do so. He advised the planning board to listen to the arguments that might be presented by Verizon, and since this is a public hearing, we also would have, you know, we obviously are going to listen to anyone else who wishes to be heard on this matter. I think I covered that correctly. Verizon, do you have any concerns with the way I laid out that history? From your point of view?
That sounds fine. Yeah, I agree. I have a statement I was prepared to make. It kind of outlines the authority that you have to act and also arguments for why we are asking the board to do this, and we think it's a, a, a good approach, a next step approach.
So before, before I give you the floor to do that, I'm gonna ask if there are any questions from the members of the board on what I just laid out? Hearing, Mr. Punderson?
I'm, I'm ready to go with either one of them, which seems to be the correct thing to do for Verizon.
Okay, so let's, let's first, I guess, give Verizon the floor. We then will, because it is their, their petition to do so, their application to do so, we will then open it up to questions from the board and then we will open it up for the public hearing. So Attorney Freiman.
Thank you. So yeah, we think that the, the simpler approach would be to allow us to, to withdraw, and at which case we would submit a new application, which would include the, a report from a third-party consultant, independent consultant. So it appeared the last hearing prior to the vote that although we have presented testimony and documentation supporting our position, that, that the proposed site was the best student site to meet our coverage needs as well as satisfying other citing criteria, that some members of the board were reluctant to rely exclusively on our testimony. So the meeting ended before we could weigh in and express our willingness to pay for a third-party review of our radio frequency coverage documents. We believe that the board should have the benefit of a consultant's report before making its decision, and as it turns out, the town's wireless bylaw provides for that and in effect requires it. So we are asking that the board allow us to withdraw the application without prejudice so that we can resubmit it with an independent review conducted in accordance with the town's bylaw. I was going to talk about the authority that the board has to allow us to do that. I think it, you know, we agree with, with Town Council that there is abundance of authority that gives wide, broad discretion to the board to act, to either revote or, you know, reconsider, remake its decision before it takes the final act, which is filing the decision, which is why the, the previous request that I had to reconsider was premature, because we hadn't taken the final action. And we think that the, that it should rest with this board to shape the approval for the power and impose the conditions rather than potentially risk losing the ability if it had to go to court. So we believe allowing Verizon to withdraw the application without prejudice is the most appropriate way, both to allow the board members to have all the radio frequency information that it desires as a vision by the bylaw, as well as providing Verizon an opportunity to establish the veracity of the, the information that we have provided. We hope that you will favorably consider this request.
So I would just ask two things, Attorney Freiman. So one, it would be an expert chosen by the town.
Correct.
And it would be paid for by Verizon.
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions of Attorney Freiman before we open up for a public hearing? Hearing none.
And Mr. Chairman, yeah, my, my only question, I just wanted to make sure, so we would be picking the, I know there was an email chain offering a couple of suggestions, just want to make sure, so we would be the, our, our town would be the one picking the independent.
Yeah, and, and I think the board, the planning board would, you know, I've been thinking this through my head, so either we, I was thinking one of two ways to do this. Either assign Nina to make some calls with other communities in which this process has been followed and who they've used and what their comments were. And either give myself as chair the opportunity to choose inappropriate consultant or bring this back to this board at our next meeting, which is the, the first Tuesday in March, and all of us can make that decision. So one of two ways of doing that.
I can't speak for everybody else, but I would be okay with you if, you know, seeking that out, making that decision as a chair.
Yeah, if, if we go that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up. Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up, um, to the public. Um, there's a new individual who I've not seen at any of the previous hearings. Uh, Mr. Sobey, are you Representative Attorney Stratton?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I, where I'm with Shashwar and Fentimacur Horizon.
Oh, okay, so is, uh, anyone wishes to be heard on this matter? Please raise your hand so you can be heard, be brought into the meeting. I ask again if there's anyone who wishes to be heard on this matter, please raise your hand, you can be brought into the meeting. Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
So moved.
Go second.
I'll second that, George.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? And closing the public hearing?
If, uh, just as a point of order, if they're going to be, if we were to get, uh, new information, would we have to reopen the public hearing for that, uh, or should we hold?
So what type of new information do you believe is going to be presented, John?
So hypothetically, if we were to approve an independent consultant, or would that be?
So if we, if we voted to, um, to withdraw the application, we would have a new public hearing.
I see, I'm, I'm reading it wrong, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, that was my mistake.
No, no problem. All right, on, on the motion to close the public hearing, there's been a motion made and seconded by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. So, um, I reopen, I open it up to the board, um, so we have either, I believe this is, we have a request from Verizon to allow the Verizon application to be withdrawn without prejudice or deny the application without prejudice, or allow the current vote to stand. And does someone wish to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we, it was denied by a three to two vote and we deny it without prejudice, which remains, so the vote remains the same as last time.
Okay. Um, I'm not following that.
Well, in the decision that will be written to the clerk, it will be a case where it was denied without prejudice. That's what, what one of the options was, either, either it's, they, they withdraw it on their own or since it was already voted down and denied, we should deny it without prejudice, is that correct?
So I would envision this procedurally, and please jump in, George, because George and Pete, you, you are former chairs as well, um, I envision this as a new motion. And it would be a motion, if that's what you want to do, so we have to do an affirmative vote. And I guess the affirmative vote would be that we vote to approve the denial of the permit or of the application without prejudice.
Right, that's what I just said.
Okay, okay, but it's a new motion though. It's not a continue, I don't believe it's continuation from the last meeting.
It's, it's different than just a revote type of thing, okay, so we're just, have a vote to the negative, to the denial, so we should just add on when it, when it's written, because it hasn't been written to the clerk, add on without prejudice and then they can come back to us.
And, and this is a new public hearing, it's not a continuation of the last one, so it's a new motion.
It's a new motion, so I take it your motion is that the board vote to deny the application without prejudice. Correct?
Correct, that, because that's the vote was last time.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, discussion, I, I will, if I could, um, so I went back today and I reviewed the last public hearing. And, uh, Attorney Stratton, who I believe represented, uh, Ms. Normandin and Mr. Brier, if I have that correct, in his comments, repeated, um, much of what Attorney Freiman mentioned, uh, tonight, that there is a provision within the bylaw that allows for an independent expert to review, uh, the materials. And Attorney Stratton actually went to as far to ask that on behalf of his, um, clients, that the town actually do that. So I guess if we allow the motion to withdraw without prejudice, Verizon has indicated that they would come back with independent verification paid by them but selected by us, so maybe we should make that as part of the motion, uh, as well. Um, and so both the, uh, both the petitioner is going to do that, but also the individuals who are represented by Attorney Stratton would get what he requested. So I think it's kind of a, a win-win all the way around, that's my opinion, so.
One, one correction, it's not to withdraw without prejudice, it's to deny without prejudice.
To not shoot me, yeah, deny without prejudice, thank you, yeah.
And that wa- that way there doesn't change what the vote actually was when it was voted on.
Um, but it's a different motion though.
Oh, okay, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah. So. All right, any further discussion? So we have a motion, it's been seconded, and I believe I have this right, the motion is made to allow Verizon application for the Meadowbrook property to be withdrawn. To either be
Denied.
To be denied, okay, without prejudice.
And everything else that you said.
And, and Attorney Freiman, you will, you will indicate Verizon's approval in this public meeting that you will be, um, reapplying and that you will participate with the town in providing names of consultants that, um, the town can choose from. And, um, communities in which they have worked as well and that you would agree, Verizon would agree to pay the cost associated with the consultant of the town's choosing. And one more thing, because I'm getting a little greedy here, and, and that you would waive any 90-day time limit required for this board to make a decision on the initial application.
We would agree to all of that. So just, can I ask one question, just, um, proceed, just the timing, so we would submit the application and at the first hearing, we would select the consultant after the application's been filed, or do we come before we file and have a, a meeting to talk about who the consultant would be, or?
So, um,
Can I, can I ask, I have one note about the consultant?
Sure.
In an effort to play devil's advocate here, should we not have a completely third-party consultant that has not been chosen by Verizon?
So, um, if you know of someone who is capable of
Yeah.
Doing that.
Like I said, devil's advocate.
And that's why I think we would task Nina with, uh, going to other communities who have gone through this process to see what their, um, comfort level has been with the work, whether they felt that, that individual was independent or not. Um, I think between George, myself and others on the board, we might want to give Nina some suggestions on questions to ask the other communities as well. Um, because poor Nina is doing yeoman's work, um, so we need to help her a little bit, and I'm happy to do so. Um, so I, I think that's kind of how we would kind of do that, so it would not, I, I don't want to give the appearance that we're allowing Verizon to drive the truck, that it's, the truck is being driven by the town. And I would hope that we are capable of doing that as a group of professionals on this board.
And, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, I, uh, in answer to, uh, Attorney Freiman's, uh, question, I think we need to open the new public hearing, okay, and what doesn't prevent us from looking for a consultant beforehand? But we should open the new public hearing before formally accepting as a board who the, the person is and then giving them time enough to do the job.
That's right, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Public hearing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, George. So I guess for time-wise, so our next meeting is March 1st. I don't know if that allows enough time for advertising and such. Um, if not, it's March 15th. Uh, that to give
Sorry, the deadline for March 15th is this Thursday.
So if not, it's then the first Tuesday in April, so.
Okay.
Um, that should give us more than sufficient time for Nina to do her homework on behalf of the board.
If you prefer the longer time, we will do that.
Yeah, why don't we do that, just?
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then before we actually vote, so, so that would give us plenty of time for us to come back and hear Nina's report on the different consultants in the different towns. So I would feel better if it was a decision made of the board, so there's more people involved and people would feel that there was more transparency in governments, so, um, we're asked that either at our next meeting or the March 15th meeting that we put that on, we can just put it as a discussion item and not as a formal item. Okay? So I take it, and please correct me, because this has been a little confusing, but, uh, we're back to, we are voting, there's a motion made and seconded to deny the application without prejudice. So a yes vote is you're voting to deny the application. A no vote is you're not voting to deny the application and essentially your vote from the last meeting stands. Does that make sense? George, I see you pondering, you're pondering that one, I can tell. So since you, since you always tell me we need an affirmative vote, so a yes would be you're voting to deny Verizon's application without prejudice. A no vote to me is, um, you're not voting to deny the application without prejudice. And essentially your vote from the last meeting stands. I think that's
I, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman, that, um, basically what we're doing is voting to change the outcome of the last meeting. And an affirmative would be to change that outcome, a negative would be to let it stand.
Yeah, yeah. All right, are we ready to vote by roll call? Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well, so that, that matter passes. So procedurally, it appears that, um, Nina, you, if you give me a call tomorrow, we can, you know, do some, some questions perhaps that we want to ask other communities based upon some names that were submitted. If anyone else knows anyone else that might be capable of reviewing the work, uh, provided, the work product provided by, uh, uh, the Verizon engineers, please let us know in a timely manner. I would ask that the other members of the planning board, please, um, let Nina know within the next couple of days if there are questions that you have that you want her to discuss with other communities that have kind of gone through this process, that would be extremely helpful. And we would seek to, um, have at least some preliminary answers by our meeting of March 1st, certainly no later than March 15th. And it would appear that Verizon would then file a new application at our April, for our April 15th meeting. We all on board? Okay. All right, thank you, all right, next item, Mr. Clark?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next item, uh, this discussion, uh, it's under other business, discussion of a proposed recycling center on Deer Park Drive, Assessor's parcel ID 11-6-4A on a 6.2 plus or minus acre vacant lot in the Industrial Garden Park zoning district. Petitioner Will Arment, 47 Warehouse Street, Springfield, M.A.
So, um, so based upon our last meeting of which we, um, uh, received, uh, a presentation from Mr. Graham, Steve Graham, about the property between Maple Street and Shaker Road, more commonly I guess now referred to as the Depot Property. Um, I received a call from, uh, Attorney Levine to see whether he would be able to discuss a proposed use of property on Deer Park. Um, since we had permitted that with Mr. Graham, uh, we are going to allow this, uh, this evening. Um, I would like to just let people know again, like I did when we met with Mr. Graham, that this is only a presentation and that certainly any comments or suggestions that we might have certainly may not be the only comments and suggestions that we might have should a, should a formal application come before this board. So, we'll go from there. Mr. Arment? You're on mute.
So, there you go. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Thank you for having us tonight.
Sure. It's all yours.
I'm assuming Mr. Levine is going to
Mr. Levine should be coming in to present.
I don't know if I booted him by mistake, but, uh, when I brought him in, he didn't appear and now he's off the list, so he's probably going to try to log back in.
Okay, well, wait a minute. Or take sure. Give my tongue tied, my tied tongue a little time to, uh, to straighten out.
Here he is.
Mr. Levine?
Yes, whoo.
Sorry about that.
I promise I didn't do that.
I was, I was
Okay, floor chairs.
Well, thank you, what did I miss?
We just, uh, did a disclaimer that, uh, any comments, suggestions, et cetera, may not just, you know, may not, uh, be our only comments or suggestions that we might have should this matter actually come formally before this board at a, at a later date, so.
Understood.
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and the rest of the planning board, uh, for having us tonight, and I'd like to compliment you on that, the last item on the agenda. Uh, my head was spinning over here, but it seems like, you know, we got it worked out. Uh, my name is Josh Levine of Levine Law, 56 Summers Road here in town, uh, representing the potential applicants in the Sully side of Deer Park Drive. Uh, you, you received the packet that I sent in with, uh, a sketch and some other, uh, information regarding the, the potential product. And as you have read in there, there are meds are seeking planning board input on a potential project solely side of Deer Park. Uh, the project would be in a nutshell, a large-scale recycling center. Uh, to be more specific, the, the ideas that contractors or the public could bring loads of waste through the, to the recycling center. Uh, and the center after that would then sort through the refuse, pull out recyclable materials. like wood, metal, cardboard, paper, and masonry. The recyclable materials would be recycled in local facilities, for the most part in Springfield. The other waste products, everything that can't be recycled, would be hauled off to landfills in New York, Pennsylvania, and Ohio, for the most part, is what the current plan would be. It's no secret that it's been increasingly important to recycle and reduce our footprint, the footprint of our trash. It's also, on the other hand, being increasingly difficult to find a place to dispose of waste products in our local area. There's just not a market for having landfills around here in a fairly densely populated area. This project would address both needs and in the end reduce the burden on our area while doing the necessary work of sorting refuse on a large scale. And we've come to the board at this very early stage of the project of this development, because as you can imagine, it will be quite expensive, and it's a large-scale project. The building itself is in the early stages of planning, but it likely have a footprint of roughly 25,000 square feet. And would be around 35 feet tall. The recycling machines that would be inside are large-scale, very complex, and are also by no means cheap. So the packet I submitted has a very rough sketch of the site. There hasn't been a full site plan done. We wanted to talk to you all first of the building and has some rough sketches of what the building would look like, at least the steel structure underlying the building. And also includes letters from a couple of businesses in the down the street in support of the project. And if there's any questions, anything that's submitted in that packet, I'd be happy to answer them. So before going too far into the project, we're here tonight to welcome any input from the planning board, answer any questions, and if there's any issues you foresee coming up that we could address now, or when we do come before the board in a formal application, we welcome any input now and would like to just start the dialogue and give you an idea of what we're, what the the armaments are planning on doing, and just to give you a general overview right now.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or suggestions or comments that they'd like to offer?
I'd like to ask how much traffic you expect this to generate?
But there's a permitting process with the DEP, the state DEP, and the the application at the very, very top end would probably generate up to 100 trucks per day, and that's really to give a, that's overestimating, but to give some leeway. So that would be the very, very most is what the applicants are now thinking.
So obviously, just to tag on that, I mean, that's a, you know, that's a very busy roadway. Very, very close to that, obviously, is a major interest, several major intersections in town. So I think a little more feedback on the traffic, the trips, the types of vehicles, anticipated hours that they would be traveling, locations of the anticipated routes of the truck, obviously. Long Meadow is not fond of adding additional via major truck traffic onto Converse Street. So if you're going out that way to go north on 91, I know we are not Long Meadow, but certainly to even get there, you know, down Chestnut Street, which now has you know, some residential property specifically. You know, the fields at Chestnut is a major residential area. So I think a lot of, a lot of work needs to be focused on traffic and traffic routes. I would be really interested in knowing how the businesses, as you come down Deer Park on your left side, the first building to me appears to be more of an office building. And I'd be interesting to know the amount of traffic on Deer Park now, the type of traffic, and then what the new mix would be. So that, to me, for traffic, that's something I would be interested in. Anyone else have concerns or issues you want to address on traffic before we keep moving along? John, you look like you're ready to say something?
Yeah, so I think that covered, I mean, my, my first thoughts when reading this was just, you know, and I'm not a recycling or, you know, manufacturing expert, just the potential noise pollution that might be caused from it, or the environmental impact. I know it's, you know, recycling, so it is that that is good for the environment, but just kind of as I would just be curious to see if there would be any impact on that level. Again, I don't know how the process works exactly, or the breakdown, or the moving about of it. So that, those were my first thoughts.
I can address that right now. The building is quite large and the resorting would all be done inside. So the, there will be a number of large loading doors on the side of the building and would allow the refuse to be brought in, and then the sorting will be done inside. And also, as part of, I mentioned the DEP purbing process. There, it's very clear that there cannot be any hazardous waste, and including asphalt cannot be recycled. And there will be inspections of the loads that are being brought in. So there is no hazardous material, so in an environmental, from environmental perspective, that that will be addressed and it will be part of the permitting process.
Okay, thank you. That was primarily pretty much my first, my first thoughts.
And the noise pollution really should be covered by it being in the large building, and that is certainly a concern of the applicants, and it's also at the end of the street, which is one also tends to help on that.
I know that I, so I went to review the zoning bylaws today. And under section 3.011 prohibited uses says incinerators or reduction of or dumping of OFALE, it's O-F-F-A-L. And excuse me, I didn't look that up, so I can't tell you what it is. Garbage or refuse on a commercial basis, except where controlled by the town. So I would suspect that you need to get a zoning determination, certainly by the building commissioner. And then I guess the second thing would be under section 3.088 industrial uses. It says, no, you shall be permitted, which would be detrimental or offensive or tend to reduce property values in the same or adjoining districts by reason of dirt, odor, or fumes, smoke, gas, sewage, refuse, noise, excessive vibrations, or danger of fire or explosion. So I would imagine, again, you would need to get some type of decision from the zoning administrator, which in this town is the building inspector, that that project or the project that you envision would meet all of those that are currently in the zoning ordinance.
There have been preliminary discussions with the zoning enforcement officer.
And certainly also because it talks about or danger of fire or explosion, I would think that this board would also want to rely on, you know, the appropriate state officials, but certainly our fire chief. Neo and the safety officer would need to address that as well.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'm encouraged that the applicants are already in contact with DEP and where DEP regulations. That is a great step in the right direction.
Yep.
And I assume that they will be proceeding in in compliance with all DEP regulations. So that, that's a good step forward. I think the only thing that, actually, what we would like to see as part of the application is a reference to those regulations and also some assessment of what any emissions from the site might be. If there's going to be a smoke stack or something like that, or if there're going to be dust issues that they will address that in the application so that we're comfortable with it.
Any other suggestions or comments from the board? So I just want to, if you could, excuse me for one moment, Pete. So so the town just passed a new master plan effective last July 1st, and, you know, traffic was was mentioned every which way you could imagine, certainly certainly reducing traffic load at the rotary. So I I hearken back to the roots taken by, by the vehicles as being very, very important to everybody. But Mr. Punderson.
I just want to say that my thoughts mirror yours. I have the same concerns.
Anything else? Did you get what you needed, Mr. Levine?
I did. Thank you very much. This is helpful. That's a great point on the roots, and I have a lot to speak about with the applicants. But I look forward to bringing it to you in a formal manner, and I think this would be a good thing for the town, and I so I hope to, we have a productive conversation going forward.
So I just have one other, just, just because I'm more curious. So let's say the project is, is done and it's up and running. What do you anticipate the value of the building and the and the machinery to be when it's all said and done?
My, my clients to tell me if I'm wrong here. I, I believe that the the recycling machines, whatever they should be called, would be upward of a million dollars, very complex, large machines. I don't believe I have a rough estimate on the value of the building now. If they would like to jump in, they certainly can, but I don't have that at this time.
So the building would be close to a million and a half dollars. The processing machine is a million-dollar machine. And then the additional equipment, bucket loaders, excavators. So we would definitely be into the $3 million range very quickly.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board, suggestions from the board members? Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, next item, please.
Thank you.
Take care.
The final item is a director's report.
Nina, you want to jump in?
As far as a director, there's still no update. Last I spoke with Mary a few weeks ago, and she was deciding whether to interview people before she left or handed off to the new town manager. I don't know where that has been now that she's been extended to June, the end of June, tentatively, her contract.
I did talk to her, I talked to Mary on Friday. I did not hear that she had been extended to June, but she did tell me that there were no candidates as of yet. And I kind of like our town. I would hope someone would want to come. So it's that Mr. Mackey who keeps kicking people out of the Zoom meetings, but, you know, so. All right. So what's our agenda looking like for March, the March 1st meeting?
So the March 1st, there's an ANR for Happy Acres so far, and then the definitive subdivision for the March 15th hearing.
Okay. Questions, anybody? For you, for everybody who I know has been available when Nina has needed some assistance and some guidance, I greatly appreciate all of your help. As I did say, she's doing yeoman's work, and it's greatly appreciated. All right, hearing no other business properly before us, I guess I would have a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
So I have a second.
Second.
Okay, everybody raise your hand. All in favor, say aye. Good night, everybody.